All right. All right, welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for June 4th, 2020. It looks like so the first item that was on the agenda, the 14 Potter Circle, does not appear that it's going to be on the agenda today. Jim, could you give us an update on that?
Sure, so as you recall with 14 Potter Circle, they were just over the threshold to require an animal kennel license and a special permit from this board. And the applicant even did at that time say that, you know, that very likely he could be back down to four dogs fairly soon. And sure enough, it was confirmed that he is down to four dogs. Obviously, you know, the animal control officer and health agent will continue to monitor that situation, see if maybe a permit will be necessary in the future, but as of right now, there's no real need for it.
Okay, so are they just gonna let the special permit lapse then, probably, right?
Right, exactly right. Essentially, once you get below the need for it, there's, there's no need for that special permit. It's kind of an odd, odd special permit that we have there.
Okay, I guess we'll just move on to the next item then. For a new public hearing, a variance side setback request for 90 Newland Avenue.
Yep, excellent. So if I could quickly read the public hearing, the Bellingham zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on June 4th, 2020 at 7:00 PM remotely via Zoom online option for the request of a variance, section 240-40, intensity of use scheduled to construct a 10 by 14 shed that is insufficient setback from the property line at 90 Newland Avenue, Bellingham, Mass. This is map 83 lot 61. Property is zoned residential. Applicant and owner is Susan Amidola, 90 Newland Avenue, Bellingham, Mass. The application may be viewed online at the bellinghamma.org on the zoning board page. Anyone wishing to be heard shall attend the public hearing via the Zoom, Zoom online option.
All right, motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Okay.
And we have the applicant here this evening, Sue.
Hi, how are you? Thanks for meeting remotely.
Hi, gentlemen. Just took a minute to figure out how to unmute myself, but yes, thank you.
So can you just walk us through basically what you're looking to do?
Sure. Um, gosh, I could, if I knew my computer wasn't gonna cut out when I get away from the mode, the box, I could probably walk out on the deck and show you. But I'll explain it anyway, just because I don't want to get booted off the meeting. I have a corner of my yard that previously had a pool and a deck in it. The rest of the yard tapers down to my, basically wetlands. And I have limited amount of space to put a shed that's not wet. The biggest reason I really would like to be able to put it in the spot that's now cleared is that my boyfriend, who lives with me, who should be here any moment, is an amputee. He's got, he's fairly mobile most of the time, but has vascular issues that cause discomfort for mobility, wearing his prosthetic. But he does like to help me with yard work and he has some equipment that he brought with him when he moved in with me three years ago, which has been living under my deck, and which hasn't been the best place for it. But I'm just trying to make a situation that he can easily access his equipment and participate in caring for the property, which he enjoys doing. He enjoys helping me, but there are times when he just isn't mobile enough, excuse me, mobile enough. So that, that's the reason I'm looking for the proximity of the shed to the house so that he can access it from the garage or the back door.
Because it's a, a lot, I mean, you have five acres, but I see that most of it's wooded. So do you have, kind of, can you walk us through exactly where you're looking to locate it?
If you'd like, I can share the screen and show the map that Sue provided us. I think it, she did a really good job with that one. Let me just, one moment here.
Thank you, because I'm definitely.
Oh, actually, I could see it now. Yeah, so it's on the back there. There's where the pool foundation is. If you can call that up, though, yeah.
Let me see if I can get that up for you guys.
Thank you. I'm so technologically challenged I would not be able to do that. Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
And what kind of foundation is the, I mean, is the shed just going to sit on blocks or what do you think?
Well, I, I thought that I was gonna need to, I had asked the builders, which is Bay State Shed, is who I'm planning on using. I'd asked them how I could make it easily movable. And he said they're designed to be easily movable. It'll be on a gravel bed graded and then six or nine inches of gravel. And I said, well, if I, you know, if I move or if I ever have a new neighbor that has an issue with the shed being there, how would I move it? And he said they just, they jack it up and slide it up on a, on a truck, a special flatbed type of truck and take it away or, you know, move it to wherever they need to. So he said they didn't have to do anything special, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. He said they just lay it on the gravel bed, which they prepare the site.
And Jim, could you give me just a kind of a reminder? So by right, you're allowed a 10 foot by 10 foot shed could be within the setback. Is that right?
It is, but not, not to the limits that they're seeking. And I know, I know Sue had a good conversation with Tim Icardi, the building commissioner first, before coming to us.
Okay, and I know that you said for your boyfriend, it's really for mainly one of his vehicle to kind of get around in the yard. So it's kind of like a utility kind of vehicle? Because he's.
So I'm sorry, it's, um, no.
But he's disabled, you're saying. Yeah, I guess I'm just.
It's garden equipment. That would be like the tractor shed and the garden equipment. So I wish I could point, but, so the drawing, but the access to the shed would be through the garage, which is the, the building you see almost very close to the pool foundation. Yes, thank you. That would be the access either out the back of the garage or out the front of the garage from the house.
And are you getting rid of the, the pool then? The pool foundation?
Yeah, the pool, actually, that picture, I think, was a Google map. So the pool is actually gone. All that's really existing now is a brick foundation, which you can't really see. That, that, I think that picture was when the walls of the pool were still there.
So I guess, could you speak to if the pool isn't there, is there any reason it couldn't be set back to kind of where the pool footprint is? Just out of curiosity?
Um, well, I guess only because I wouldn't, let's see, I wonder how it would get out.
Is it because of the grade? Is that what, or the?
Mostly, it's the, the grade slopes down quite severely beyond the pool and.
Boyfriend with that part time.
Quite what? There is actually an existing shed that's rotting, but the previous owners had placed it on the boundary of the tree line in the backyard. And I often have standing water there. So it's just really wet down there.
Is that shed much further away from where this location is for this new one?
It is. Well, geez, I almost wish you could see it. It's, oh, thank you. I wonder if there's. Yeah, you.
Actually, let me see if I can.
If you can see the, the deck, it's pretty much parallel with the deck.
One second.
Google, Google Earth imagery is not showing much, if that's where you're going.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it does it. It's directly behind the, oh, all right, it is.
Yeah. If this is helpful or, or not.
I would say it's the next, if you move your icon down one more line, it's about there in the backyard, yeah.
But the grade, yeah, I guess you could see the grade here on, as a marker. So it is sloping down quite a bit to the back.
It goes from 10 to 8. It goes 10, 12, 10 to 8, looks like is the next number down. Yeah, so it would be in the area of the 10 to, 210 to 208 slope. So is the existing shed on some sort of blocks or anything on one side? I would presume that it is. Maybe the backside of the blocks and the front side is level with the sod?
I think they originally probably put it on something like railroad ties and all that's rotted out. We recently went out and jacked it up and threw some cinder blocks under the swamp edge, the side that's really low, that's collapsing. So it's, I won't call it level, but it's not sinking into the muck quite so much there.
Did you, did you say that it's wet where that, where that shed is now?
Yeah, the existing shed, yes, yeah.
So that whole back of your property is kind of where it slopes down, is where it goes into wetlands?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
It's beautiful, but it's.
Yeah.
And what was the, and what was the reasoning that you couldn't go where the, where the pool is, the old pool?
Oh, I, I think it is too close to the house. The pool, I, I would say that was about five or six feet. And then if I put that there, I'm not sure where I'd have to put the door of the shed to, to access it. So what I was hoping to do was have a door on the shed that opened towards the street, towards that maple or oak tree that you see, yep. And then one on the side, yes, so that he could access it and drive in and drive out to either end of the house. So I'm afraid that if I, if I put the shed any, where the pool foundation is, there won't be the same access going to the front of the.
Well, I'm not suggesting that it has to be exactly where the pool foundation is, but take it from the pool foundation and move it back maybe five feet from there. Wouldn't that work?
Could, would I, would I be able to?
Jump in there for a minute. Hi, guys. I'm Andy. I'm the he that he keeps referring to.
Hi. Hi.
How are you? The, the topography, as you go, if we're looking at that picture of the, the pool in this, this photo, and, and we're calling 12 o'clock the top of the screen, from about maybe 11 o'clock to about 4 o'clock on that, on the picture of that pool is where the topography really starts to kind of dip anyway. So we were looking at a topographical a minute on somebody's screen there and we saw it go from 12 to 10 to 8. You know, everything kind of starts its sloopy bits there. And when you look at where that rectangle is on the screen drawn there, that's kind of a really, as far as preparing the ground for the gravel, for the shed guys to prepare the ground for the gravel, you know, that's quite a level spot. And what doesn't really show very well on the picture is right next to the garage there. There's just about maybe two or three feet of slightly raised bed type stuff. And so what she's, you know, kind of doing, as she said, it's kind of tough that we don't have a picture. I could go out and take pictures if you guys wanted me to do that. But it would just kind of like, it very logically clicks into that spot where that is drawn. If you push that, that rectangle that you're looking at kind of down on the screen and to the right of the screen, you'd be getting into funny topography. And also you'd be getting into kind of funny lines, the way the sides of the house would line up with the shed.
How about, how about if you turned that, doing what you just said, but turning the 90 degrees? So it's longer the other way?
Can it be that close to the house? I thought there were some other rules about not being too close to a dwelling. Do I have that wrong?
Well, the shed would be, there's no limitations for the shed there.
Yeah, especially if you're just putting on crushed stone or gravel. I mean, I guess that would. So I guess the, so Jim, I guess I'm just wondering what, for the variance, what it would just be for seeking a side yard setback?
Right, so the, the exact request would be a seven foot relief to the side yard setback. So the, the requirement is 10 feet in a residential zone and, and the ask is three feet. So there would be a seven foot variance.
So I guess the other question is if you keep it kind of where it is and you moved it towards, more towards that corner of the current house, is there any, I guess, is it more that the planting beds get affected for where you want to access it on that door?
I still think that turning it 90 degrees makes a, makes a good option.
Right, I'm kind of thinking the same as artist thinking. This is Jim Dunley speaking. Also, we haven't discussed if you're facing the house to the right side of the house. It seems like there's plenty of property over there, too.
I guess it's the adjacency to the garage is what I'm thinking, is why you're not doing it on the south, the bottom part.
You can't really see it because of the shadow of the house, but there's a two and a half foot raised bed. The shadow you see next to the garage, there's a, a raised bed that's probably two and a half feet deep. So that area along the house between the garage and the fence is, is quite narrow.
Well, the, the question that Jim had, or the board member had, was why the shed can't be on the bottom? If we're looking at this page to the, not, not by the garage, but by the other side of the house.
Right, it's just the distance of walking for Andy when he's not really, you know, fully mobile. It's just the distance of walking across the yard. This way he can cut through the garage, walk into the shed, climb on the tractor or grab whatever gear it is and, and be on his way.
Okay.
So Brian, if I, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Brian. Yeah.
Sure, thank you. So I think, I think the reason why you're hearing a lot of questions is because, generally speaking, that we don't want to necessarily tell anybody what to do with their own property. If you want to put a shed where you want to put a shed, that, what business of it is ours. But unfortunately, in this particular permit of variance is one of the most difficult things that the zoning board is asked to grant. It's intentionally so because the, the public policy is, is that the, that the town has laid out these rules and expect everyone to follow it. And so there's consistency and fairness to all that's involved and to, to make sure that neighbors and everyone get along, that we don't vary the rules for people unless there's very specific circumstances and criteria that we have to follow. And those are spelled out in the zoning bylaws regarding variances. And one of the criteria that we need to follow is that the hardship is relating to the soil conditions, the shape of the topography of the land and things like that. And I'm not sure if that's exactly present here. I understand that there is a, a very good other hardship that you're, that you're advancing and, but for a variance anyways, by the bylaw, it has to be something that's flowing from the soil, it's flowing from the shape, something unique to your situation that doesn't affect anyone else and that you deserve special relief from these rules. So I think all of the questions you're getting is, we really want to work with you to find a solution that works for you guys. But really in the back of our minds saying, how can we possibly allow this variance when you're not hitting the criteria marks? And so that's, I think, I think that's where this is stemming from. I could be wrong. But there are very specific criteria. I don't know if you're aware of them and you have an argument to make with regard to that criteria. I would, I would like to hear it so that we could try to help you find a solution.
Okay.
Just try to speak to that as, as clearly as I feel like you articulated the question. The two things that we're trying to accomplish by putting the shed on the garage side of the house is number one, accessibility. For me to be able to go from the house to the shed, to the lawn tractor, doing the type of work, you know, that comes along with housework and everything else that's going with life, having that shed on the garage side of the house means that I'm just going down three stairs to get into the garage. And if I exit through the front of the garage and there's a door accessible from the front of the property, it's just yard right there. It puts that, that building within ease of access, especially if I happen to be, as from time to time happens with a prosthetic leg situation on crutches at the time. The second thing that you mentioned was the property, if this is an issue of property, trying to find a, a smart place to put that shed that's on high enough ground, really the highest part of the ground that goes along with this property is all kind of stuffed up into this corner that we're looking at on the screen, on the shared screen right now. As you look on the shared screen down into the right, which would be, I think, southwest, literally, in, in the world, the property slopes much more aggressively towards the, the wet areas. And so getting, you know, some, something to set a, a building on that, you know, to keep it away from the damp and everything like that in that part of the property would be a lot more difficult. And that shed would be six, 10 feet lower than the, the line of the house. You're looking at a house that's basically a walk-in basement type thing. So the front yard of the house is ground level and the back, the deck is actually second, would be equivalent to second floor level. So when you look off to the right and down on that thing, it looks like, oh yeah, there's lots of room for a shed there. That's a lot lower and that's, that's a bigger difference. And, and just distance wise. If I can be devil's advocate for a second, but if we just shift the location of the, the shed onto the area or near the area of the pool, it's, it's, you know, it's just a couple more feet in one direction. It, it seems like that the pool could go there.
It may not be in the shed.
You shifted seven feet. I guess that's what you need to do.
Yeah, yes. And Jim, I have a question. Is there any sort of relief that, so maybe like the American Disability Act or anything like that that would sort of supersede our zoning requirements and that they could be afforded this?
Well, not, not, not that I'm worried in superseding, however, you certainly could take into consideration when thinking of the, the variance requirements in terms of perhaps the, the number one, the literal enforcement of the provisions by law would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the, to the appellant. I mean, the otherwise, I think, you know, perhaps they're making a case for it for number one there.
So this is Jim Dunley speaking and, you know, I was holding off, making comments similar to what Brian Salisbury just did, which was to explain to the applicants that, you know, the board generally is exceedingly, extremely reluctant to grant variances for, for perhaps obvious but not so obvious reasons. We've, we've had in front of the board many of the times that people come in seeking a variance to be up against a setback just for no other reason. And then they like, that's the position of the garage. Or they want a bigger garage than their property could have. You know, and we've have to follow the three very specific criteria, all three of which need to be met. And, you know, those petitions were denied. And we also have to be, you know, very consistent in our determinations, you know, for the integrity of the zoning board. Else somebody could come in and say, hey, you know, you just granted one within three feet and, you know, the only real hardship they had there was a sloping lot. And plenty of people have sloping lot. There's nothing per zoning bylaw on the criteria that needs to be met, particularly unique about a sloping lot. So we're just trying to, again, help you find a way that you can have your shed with perhaps, you know, not pushing it to the, to the variance. Here's typically what happens with a variance. Whether it's the applicant themselves or their attorney speaking, they come very prepared with a succinct argument to each of the three criteria that must be met. They must be met in total, each of them, not separately. So you can't just meet one of the three or two of the three. All three need to be met. They have a very well-prepared statement as an argument against each of those three criteria on why they feel they meet those three criteria. And that's usually the, the protocol on how a variance request goes. I think everyone on the board has great empathy for the physical situation in, in your household. We've seen, you know, many applicants where there's, you know, similar hardships within the, within the household. But, you know, it, it still comes down to, we have to find a way to meet the three criteria, meet or exceed the requirements of those three criteria. And it's, you know, it's not a pleasant job for us to say no when we're compelled to say no. But it's, it literally is for the, you know, for the consistency of the decisions that we make and the integrity of the office, that we don't seem capricious in granting variances in application A and for very similar situations, not granting under applicant B.
Well, this, this is Brian. The one thing I'm just wondering is about, I mean, could you argue that the site topography is a factor in this? Because it's maybe not to most people, but the applicant, because I know, you know, with accessibility as an architect dealing with it, the, you know, grade changing, you know, going down, you know, two feet or a couple of feet over a certain distance can be a hardship to someone who is disabled. So I, I mean, that's the only thing that I would wonder a little bit.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, we're, we're looking at a picture of an old pool. How big was that pool? And most pools are on a steely level type ground. So I'm having a hard time understanding if the pool doesn't exist, why that shed can't move it just enough?
I guess, I mean, that's where my mind kind of went to. That's what I.
The, the pool dimension was 18 feet.
Okay.
And I, I think the, the reason that the, the shed would be kind of using that pool foundation would kind of put the shed right in the middle of the usable part of the backyard. So it would be a, an odd thing to have to move around, I guess. We were hoping to have it fit where the shed drawing now is, is where the deck was.
It's to me a little bit, this is Brian again, but that made to Brian Salisbury and Jim's kind of comments about the thresholds to meet for a variance, that in that instance, that seems workable. Even though it might be from an aesthetic point, you don't like the view or that it's going to kind of be in your, your outdoor area in the back, doesn't really meet the threshold for a variance. But I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Personally, I think they have the space to either move it in that direction or like I said, pivot, pivot 90 degrees, would still give you two openings and you could stay away from it. or like I said, pivot, pivot 90 degrees would still give you two openings and you could stay away from it. I, I think it, there's plenty of room there to meet what we're asking.
I mean, it's a great point, Peter, that you're saying that that is basically a flat surface right there where the pool is.
I mean, it may not be exactly what someone wants, but there's no hardship that can be moved there.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest to the applicant, you know, the, the position we as the board find ourselves in. So let's just play hypotheticals for a moment that there's a lot in Bellingham in some zoning district that is quasi-buildable. It has an extreme slope on it. And if, and if the builder could just shift their house within the setback boundaries, then they could build their house. If that was brought to us as a, as a board member, we would probably vote it no because it's a self-imposed hardship. You're looking at the lot, you know it can be done with it. And if it can't fit within the criteria of our zoning setbacks, then you need to have a smaller house or do some other alterations to your, to your, to your plan. You know, and, and again, we're not trying to be cold or callous, but, you know, we're trying to be consistent in decisions that we yield to those that come before us. So this would be a, a similar, you know, case, if you would, that, you know, okay, there's a slope to the lot. I mean, it was apparent when the home was bought that potentially there's some limitations in terms of where a future shed might be sited. Much in the same way, if I wanted a very big garage in my backyard, but the only way I could have that is if I was to encroach on the setbacks of my neighbors. So, you know, these would have been, you know, self-imposed hardships. I should have bought a bigger lot if I wanted a bigger garage type of a thing. So again, we, we're not trying to be callous, but the zoning regulations are as strict as they are for that reason. So that we, we don't have undue biases in our board where, because, you know, we're perceived to be friendly with some applicant in front of us. Maybe we've gone cycling with them or something and they get the variance and somebody else has a similar slope to their log, but, but they don't get the variance.
Mr. Chairman, if I can butt in again, what was the size of the shed that was be proposed?
It's 10 by 14. I mean, that's the thing is that I think like you're saying, Peter, it seems like it just needs to move seven feet, which is not.
I, I know it may not be a common size and I know 10 is a great width. But if you took two feet off, it made it, you know, longer to make up for the square footage of the shed. Moving it towards the pool area. It wouldn't be so intrusive into the ad. So you, so I think there are options. You could wind up with a narrower, longer shed and suck it over so it won't be, you know, right on the property line. I think there are options here.
I'm sorry, just hoping not to do quite so much heavy site work as well because the expense of that is a bit of a hardship.
Can, can I ask the question of the board? Does the fact that there was a deck built there when the property was purchased? There was a deck that went, basically the exact footprint of that a box that you're looking at there that we recently removed. Does the fact that there was an existing structure not bear on this at all?
I think, I mean, Jim and you had to clarify, if you could clarify on this, but I think that it would need to still be in existence, right?
Right. Or, or if you, you need to confirm that footprint prior to demolition with the building commissioner as well. I mean, he needs to have something on file. You could speak with him with that. That wouldn't be with the zoning board. You could speak with the building commissioner on that one.
And it would need to be a like structure as well. If for some reason that deck got damaged or wood rotted and it needed to be repaired. It's, you know, pre-existing, non-conforming and you could certainly repair it, but, you know, not replace a deck with a shed or a poolhouse or something.
Right. There's, there's a lot of variables there. Yeah.
What, what I would say is, you know, if I was the king of Bellingham, I would say, go ahead, do it. But we're, we're kind of, our hands are tied. And when we find ourselves, because this happens a lot, you know, that we, people ask us for things and, and we're just not, we're just not able to give them the relief that they want. We often tell the applicant, look, if you want a, another month to think about it, if you want to consult with attorney, come back and tell us how you think you fit within the criteria and how we can, because we want to. We want to allow you to do this. Then we're happy to do it because if we, if we have to vote tonight, then you can't come back for another two years. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but you can't come back. So if you want to come back next month with, you know, and articulate how we could give you this relief, you could certainly do that. Or you could withdraw your application entirely. And if, if at a later point you discover a reason, how, how we can help you with that, then you can come back. So Jim, I'd like you kind of. I don't know if I'm, if what I said was just.
No, you, you spelled it out clearly. Yeah, the board typically offers the applicant, if, if it doesn't look like it's going your way this evening, but there might be some opportunities in the future. It's certainly, you know, honestly, it's, it's, it could be best for the applicant to withdraw. That way it gives you the ability to reapply to the board at a later date sooner than that of if, if one was denied. So there is that opportunity. And yes, as Brian mentioned, if you, you know, if there are some minor tweaks that you want to do or, or consult an attorney, you certainly could continue to a later date or request a continuation at least to a later date. You do have some options.
Just gonna, just jump in there. I think it was Brian, I'm not sure which one of you who was articulating earlier that you had kind of a, a set of three criteria that you are aiming to meet when you're looking at a variance. Could you just, I believe the first criteria was hardship and I wasn't able to quite grab the.
I guess if you want to look into those too, you could talk with Jim Kupfer about it and get a copy of our zoning bylaws to look at more specifically.
It's 240, section 12.
I know, so Sue and I had a brief conversation about them and directed to the website. They're all posted on the, on the town's website under charter and ordinances, zoning bylaws. And as Brian mentioned, 240, section 12. There's a section B of that is that one, two and three. Those, those are the three keys.
Believe me, we, we want to say yes. So if you can, if you want to take, take the month until the next meeting to see how you can make this work and we, and, and we can do it, then we're happy to do it. But, you know, it's just our hands are tied unfortunately. And believe me, no one, I was speaking for myself and I'm sure for everyone else. No one wants to say no, believe me.
This is Jim Dunley speaking again. In the slope of your rear yard, you're a budding neighbors. Do they have a similar slope or a slope to their yard as well?
Those to the north of me to the.
Yeah, I'm looking at the contour lines. Thanks, Jim.
Pretty much the whole neighborhood. We all, there's a stream that you can't really see, but there's a stream that runs behind at least the, I think it goes under Daniel Drive. But my immediate neighbor, 94, 96, and myself have, have a slope.
The reason I ask is that, you know, of 240 dash 12, which is the zoning bylaw in question, part B, item number two. Keep going on and on with the subtext as here. The text is, the hardship is owing to circumstances relating to soil condition, comma, shape or topography of such land or structures and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. In, in other words, there's something very particularly unique about your lot as opposed to others in the zoning district. You know, again, it, it, the bylaw, you know, we're looking for ways to assist you with this. And, and the bylaw is, you know, kind of further constraining us here that, you know, in, in theory, an argument could come back to us that, hey, you know, their lot was sloping and everybody else is sloping too. There was nothing particularly unique about their hardship. It is generally affecting the other lots in the zoning district as well. So I, 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 again, as Brian Salisbury said, you know, generally we would love to grant variances. We have a number of innocuous variances that come before us, a number of them. You know, variance is, I think, one of the highest, if not the highest hurdle to, to, to get across in, in front of the, the zoning board. And it's, it's meant that way. And we're, we're bound by, you know, the zoning regulation in, in this case so that we can't be capricious and uneven in how we hand out variances.
Yeah. And I, I think this is Brian, but to add on to it is that you really have to explore all other options. It really has to owe to these criteria and that you've explored and it can't possibly be located elsewhere. But it sounds like you can ensue and it sounds like you could get a general sense of where the board is going and that.
Yes, yeah. So I guess we should just plan to take the time and see if we can.
Yeah, I think, I think at a, you know, at a, you know, just a simple level is just to really familiarize yourself with the zoning bylaw, with that section. Look into whether or not any of the comments the board has made, if you look at it to more depth of any of those could be a possibility. And then maybe thinking, just like Brian Salisbury said, whether you would want to get legal representation to kind of help you with the process.
For what it's worth, there was some discussion earlier that, you know, perhaps take that rectangle, make it eight feet wide instead of 10 feet wide, make it longer to get the same square footage. I myself, you know, have riding mowers, like, you know, many of us in town, all kinds of, you know, yard maintenance equipment. And I keep it in my car trailer because, you know, I've sold one of my antique cars and I had a leftover car trailer doing nothing. But my point is it's eight feet wide. And, you know, and in terms of how that footprint might work for your lawn and garden equipment, I mean, it works perfect for me for my riding mower. And I've got, you know, the biggest riding mower that Craftsman makes and I've got my riding mower trailer in there and everything else. So it's not unworkable if it's eight feet wide. Just, you know, if you contemplate that as a possible solution.
And you also said Sue, that you're going to have a, you're going to have a door on the street facing side and then another door on the side facing where the pool is too, right? So.
Right. Just so there's access, drive-in access to both the front yard and the rear yard.
Which I, I would just think in that case that, you know, if you only, it seems like that making the eight feet seems at least on the surface that it could be doable because you'd have at least those two access points through it.
Right. I don't know that, well, maybe you could do it. Maybe the turn would work in an eight foot. It, it might work. Yeah. I guess it's, you know, back to the drawing board.
Jim, is it a nine by nine shed that you can have?
I think it's 10 by 10. Is that right, Jim? Or what is the?
I don't think it's 10 by 10. I think it's.
Oh, no, it's not. Oh, Jim, are you muted?
Jim Dunley or Jim Kupfer?
Kupfer or Jim Dunley, if you.
I think it was a question for Jim Kupfer. That's why I was quiet. Too many Jims, three, three Jims on the call.
I, I thought it was 10 by 10 also.
I, it's something to look into. My, my point is, is that some certain dimension is, you don't need anyone's permission. You can put it right on, right close to the line.
Yeah, that was my question at the beginning. That's why I was, and I don't know, maybe it's not the sound like that, but that's what I was wondering too.
Where would I look that up, Brian? I would ask, I, I don't know what happened to Jim Kupfer, but I would.
I'm here. I'm right here. Hey, so, so yeah, so in the building code, there is talk of a reduced size shed can give you some flexibility. And Tim Icardi's on the line here too, who could speak to that very likely. Tim, I believe, isn't it 200 square feet? Gives a reduction in setback?
No, so 200 square feet would just be a zoning permit. It wouldn't be a permit to construct it. So it's in, in, in eight by 10 would be able to go anywhere on the property. Or if there was an existing shed, we, we let them put it right back on the same footprint because it was pretty much pre-existing. And if it goes in the same spot, so I don't know. Was there a shed there before? I forget.
No, there was a pool deck.
Okay, okay.
So, so eight by 10 is your answer there?
And that's the max, eight by 10?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Well, I guess we should just look at our limited options and, and see.
So I would, I would take the month if I were you.
I would, I would ask for a continuation. During that month period, if you find you come to a remedy on your own, you always can just withdraw your petition.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks. Thanks, fellas.
I guess we, I just to be clear, are you requesting a continuation?
Please, yes.
So I'll move to continue the hearing until the next.
July 2nd.
All those in favor? All right, that passes. We appreciate you coming before the board and especially doing it through the Zoom is difficult as well. So, and we, we, we really do, as the other board members have said, we can feel for your hardship and we definitely do want to help you. So I think just taking the month and.
I may be back at you with a few questions here and there before July 2nd. But, but I appreciate the, the time and all the answers and.
Yeah, Sue, absolutely. If you have any questions, feel free to give my office a call and I'm happy to walk, walk you through.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Is it just minutes now then? Is there, is there any other business?
I believe all we have are the two sets of minutes, March 5th and May 7th.
Do the board members want time to review or is everyone already reviewed in advance?
I do have a, a couple of things on the March 5th meeting. If I may, should I go through them, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
On the first page, on this, bottom of the page, second bullet, on line three of them. We want, it should be one B, I believe, but just B.
I think that is, I think it's one B.
No, on, on the third line down, not the first line, on the second bullet.
Yeah, it should be one before it.
Yeah, one before the B, yes. Then, then on the next page, about a third of the way down, the applicant informed the board that the type of stone does not there break up well. I think it's supposed to be the type of stone there does not break up well. Just move there back after stone. I think that's correct. And then under, about a Brian Wright, the third bullet continually is there twice. Just, just delete one of them.
Just take the one at the end out. It doesn't matter. Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. The one that still works, I think. On the next page, our members present, the continuation of the public hearing. About five lines down, the, the variance would be 27,500, I believe, not 25,500.
Is that something then?
Well, it says the lot area requirement is 40,000 square feet. They have 12,500, so.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. It's a math, math there. I know, that's great.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Take it.
All those in favor? All right. Any other comments then? Is there any comments on the other set of minutes? So there are two sets of minutes then.
Yeah, there's another set that the next meeting, I didn't see a couple of grammatical errors, but nothing with. Yeah, there's another set, the, the next meeting, I didn't see a couple of grammatical errors, but nothing with. Well, yeah. Discussing.
Okay. Did anyone else have any comments or anything else they saw in the other minute, other minutes?
Um, I'm spinning, spinning through the second set of minutes now. I'm just about done.
Yeah, take your time.
Yeah.
Well, while we wait, I just remind everybody that there's an election coming up.
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. I actually went there this Tuesday to vote. I was the only one there.
Good job, Jim.
Way to social distance.
Yeah, social distancing was not a problem.
Hey, Jim, do we think the July meeting will be um online as well or in person?
Yeah, I was actually gonna bring that up. I'm, I'm betting it's online, uh, because I just got a notice from the Mass Senate and House have passed a bill offering town meeting, not, not our meetings, but the town meeting, annual town meeting, the flexibility of doing it remotely. Uh, so it sounds like they're contemplating it being going on for a little while longer. So
I, I, I asked because I'm away on that meeting, but I can, I can log in remotely.
You're gonna be in the country?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna be Vermont, which is really not a part of the country.
It's almost part of the country.
Almost.
So I'm good with the minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
That's all I have for you.
All right. Motion to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all disposed. Yep.
Good.
All right, everybody.
Thank you all, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Hey, Jim Cupfer.
Yes.
Um, I'll play around with the second computer that I have here and find out why Zoom can't um, detect the camera that's on there because I'm using Skype and other services on it and
Yeah, give me, give me a call if you want to test it out.
Yeah, maybe tomorrow. I don't know too many people actually that are using Zoom. You're one of the few Zoom meetings I actually join. Yeah.
We prefer if you're not on.
Your neighbor does.
You never looked any better, dude. Just leave it the way it is.
I don't know if we gotta stare at Peter all the time.
Hey, Peter, I like your new facial here. You look good.
Yeah, you know, I'm going, I'm going back to the seventies, you know?
I thought you were trying to look like me. All right, nevermind.
Later, guys.
Bye. Bye, guys.
Bye.